Southern Wasco County regarding the the solar farms. Did you have that, how'd that go?
It went fine. The, it was a pre-application hearing. It really wasn't a hearing. It was information and they did offer time for questions and comments. So the structure of it is this was to announce that the project is making an application. And then it's kind of interesting. So then a committee from Oregon Department of Energy looks at the project and says, okay, these are all the concerns. Okay, developer, you answer all of these concerns. And actually, they reached out as Toowsco County and our planning department added some Adams have added some issues that for them to look at. And then that's going to take a year, year and a half. And then they'll come back and have a public hearing. So, and so it's in the Oregon Department of Education of Energy, Oregon Department of Energy. They compile this and present it to the public. So it keeps the developer in, 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 in your, in, in the loop, you know, right in the loop, but not leading the process. And then the Department of Energy again takes all of that and, and the information from the public hearings, the one public hearing, and then submits a proposal to Energy Facility Siting Council, EFSC, EFSEC, which is the deciding body. And so it's kind of the, the Oregon part of energy is, you know, saying, okay, we've done the research about this company and their proposal, and we either recommend it or don't to, to EFSEC. And at that point, there's also another second opportunity for the public to engage. If, if, but the public has to have raised the, the issue at the first hearing in order to raise it again at the last hearing.
Does, does the county have any input through the planning department?
Yes, yes, they do. But we do in two ways. One, we already have looked at the proposal and said, okay, these are some issues for the developer to address. And second, citizens can talk to the commissioners and we'll have, we'll be involved at the next stage as well.
Okay. Well, I ran and I saw Joan Byrd, you know, maybe eight months ago, and she said they, they were looking at solar farms in Sherman County and and she gave me the impression there was some pushback or contention within the, within Sherman County, but I'm not sure how much that was.
Yeah, it's kind of distinguish between wind turbines and solar. Wind turbines, the land underneath can still easily be used for wheat.
Right.
And solar, it's harder to use the land underneath for farming. The two places in Wasco County that are being considered don't have any farming going on underneath them. These are, these are some of our rockiest, most barren ground in Wasco County.
And probably chose those areas because of that reason.
Yeah. But they're also kind of interesting. It's in a, not a basin, but a it's not visible from Shanico and it's not visible from, from well, definitely not visible from Mopin. Mopin's down in the valley. So they get up on Bay Coven Road and it's Bay Coven Road climbs up to a ridge and then drops down over the ridge into Shanico. So it's solar panels won't be available. Wind turbines would, but they're not proposing wind turbines there.
I just want to thank you. I, I just want to say it's nice to say Lisa, see Lisa today.
Right.
She, yeah, Lisa had one of those, um, those moments you always, that you're always afraid of having when you totally space something out and, and then, you know, four hours later, remember, which we've all had.
Right. No, my, my full apologies for not showing up as the presenter last week. It was a little bit, I was telling Scott when I saw him at Cherry Festival, it's a little bit like that dream you have where you haven't gone to school all term long and suddenly you're having to take the final and you realize that you have majorly messed up. My apologies for, and I think it's called a senior moment, Scott, if I'm.
No, 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 no. That's, that we call that ageism when we call it senior moment.
Right.
You know, but, but yeah, everyone well, everyone has those moments and, you know, you brought back a memory of having that type of dream. I forgot all about that one. We haven't prepared for the test.
Right.
Also sure it was a dream in my case.
Is that a comment on your college days? Well, I, yeah, I definitely owe everybody an apology. Most importantly, Lisa, because she does a fair amount of work putting these together. And the last thing you want is to have your guest speaker just be a no show. So I do apologize for that. Scott said you all got on fabulously without me anyway. So.
I had on Tuesday, I had two different meetings canceled. Like, so yeah, and I showed up for each one and then they've got their, their cancel. So I, okay, what am I gonna do with myself?
All right. Sorry. I apologize. Um, it's that time of year when allergies meet asthma and they decide to act up whenever they want to. So bear with me. It's just that time. It'll pass. And so will medication. So, um, with that, Dan, do you want to just do a quick sound check to make sure we can hear you loud and clear?
Good morning, everybody.
Perfect. Look at that. Awesome. So with that, good, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dallas Chamber of Community Affairs. Today, our guest is Dan Richardson, which sits on the city council for the city of the Dells. And we look forward to hearing the updates and those committees that you sit on and where those things are moving in that. And so I also encourage you, most of you probably are, but if you're not attending the city council, at least hop online so that you can stay engaged in what is happening and same with our Wasco County. But before we go and have Dan present, I know you know, I'm pretty sure you know everybody on the screen, but just in case, it's a good refresher and also if you have a short soundbite as to what's happening with your organization, but it has to be short and sweet. So we'll just go there. So I'm going to start with the person in my upper left corner, which is Phil Brady.
Good morning, everyone. Good to be here. A quick update, I attended a meeting regarding Oregon occupational, Oregon safe OSHA, Oregon Safety and Health, what is it? And farming habitation for seasonal workers. It went well. They've took a lot of testimony. The key thing is I understand that there was a a proposal to greatly expand the amount of footage, square footage needed per each seasonal worker, and that has been taken off the table. The governor has said that that was going to be unnecessary and unaffordable.
Right.
That's, so that's, that's good. The, good to support our workers there. Our workers are, you know, providing quality housing already.
Thank you. Thank you for being there. Scott, let's go ahead with you.
All right. Good morning, Lisa. Good morning, everyone. Scott McKay, community liaison for Circles of Care. We connect older adults who need some kind of periodic support with volunteers. The only thing I can mention is that tomorrow at nine o'clock at the Mid Columbia Senior Center, Tracy Morgan, the director, executive director of the, of the Oregon Alzheimer's Association and Andy Shepherd, the project director, will be at the center and talking about, you know, how we can help promote brain health and, and better understanding of dementia. It is for those who have an interest in dementia from either a loved one or that they're caring for, or maybe just a neighbor that they care for. And so it's an opportunity to participate in the planning and to learn more about how to support those with dementia and how to reduce the stigma. The and I had another thought, but I can't remember that right now. So I will pass it on. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Dave Peters?
Good morning, everybody. Dave Peters, Columbia Cascade Housing, Mid Columbia Housing Authority. We got some additional funding. Actually, the last piece of the funding required to continue with the Rand Road project in Hood River. So that was huge. We just found that, I think it was last when it was filled up. Anyway, just found out about that. So that was good news. I think it was on Monday, maybe it was Tuesday morning. And that will make that a lot move faster. And I think it's going to be 138 apartments in Hood River. And I just saw some pictures of what it's going to look like a couple of days ago. It's going to be a an awesome looking, looks like a community college campus sort of. It's very nice looking. And we're still looking for a, a housing developer. So if you know anybody you know, that wants to, background in finance, background in development, you know, willing to train anybody who has, you know, the skills, some skills involved and can learn the rest. So send people that have, you know, some, some interest in that our way. Thanks.
David, can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
About the Rand Road project that's exciting. Who, remind me who the partners are and that is city and county or just one or the other? And it's in Hood River, obviously.
You know, and actually I know we've got some assistance from community, uh, construction excise tax, uh, which I'll talk to you about, or Joel will become a commissioner. But they, I honestly don't remember which one. It could be both. I mean, I don't think the county is excluded from doing an inside city limits. But yeah, they got construction excise tax. We have a partner that's going to be doing most of the development. We are providing some section eight vouchers, some unit based vouchers. And then we've got, I think, some federal money in and some, you know, some of this is definitely the state. The one we just got was some tax credits and tax bond, which is federal run through the state. Phil might have actually been attended more meetings than I have on that, but yeah, so it's, it's a lot of things. I know one of them at least is using construction excise taxes and that's a tax that they implemented both the city and the county years ago, and 1% of construction cost gets put into this fund. The county gets to keep about, I think it's 65%, the 35% or maybe even only 15% goes toward to the state and then they reallocate it back out. In our case, it's us and we use it as down payment funding. And we had in the city of Hood River, $117,000 to do down payment. I think we had 177,000 from the county. So if you do the math, if that's only, you know, but I, again, I can't remember the percentage, 20%. The county and the city both have some pretty big pots of money that they can then disperse how they want. And at least one of them has supported this, but sorry, Dan, I don't know which one. I'll make sure Joel or somebody gets back to you.
And sorry, not, I didn't mean to give you the pop quiz. I was just
That's okay.
Been thinking about that lately. Thanks.
All right. Thank you. Lisa Gambi?
Good morning. I'm Lisa Gambi, Wasco County Clerk. So as you all know, May 21st is the primary election. Next Tuesday, April 30th is the last day to register to vote if you are not registered. Ballots will mail out on Wednesday, May 1st. Voter pamphlets are coming out any day now. And in case you hadn't already heard the media release, Trump is not in the voters pamphlet, and that was a choice made by the Trump campaign. Same with Marilyn Williamson from the Democratic side. So we will have the four out of the five commissioners that are, are the candidates for the commissioner position have profiles in the voters pamphlet and a reminder that Lisa is hosting a candidate's forum next Tuesday night at six o'clock at the senior center here in the Dells. So I encourage everybody to come hear what all of the first time since I've been clerked that we've had more than two candidates run for commissioner. And that means that unless one of, one of the five is extremely popular and gets 50% plus one of the vote, the top two vote getters will go to a runoff in November. So it's my update.
Okay. Sue Davis?
Hi. Good morning, Sue Davis. I'm the executive director of Advancement and the Columbia Gorge Community College Foundation. A couple of things I'll share today. The college will be hosting a business after hours with the chamber on May 16th. So you can put that on your calendar. It'll be at the readiness center on campus. We are, our scholarship program is open right now. If you happen to know any students who are at CGCC or considering enrolling at CGCC, the application period was started April 5th and it closes May 20th. And anyone who visits the CGCC foundation website will be able to see that there's a recorded Zoom workshop for students to help them understand kind of what the application process is like and give them some support for that. And then the last thing I'll say, which isn't really my event, but I'm just aware of it and want to just say it out loud, make sure everybody else is, is the town hall on Saturday. That is being hosted by Senator Merkley at the Dallas High School. The, the staff at Merkley's office actually asked us to identify a couple CGCC students who could come and be a part of that town hall. So you will see a couple of students speaking at that event also, not really presenting, but speaking a tiny bit.
Sue, do they have a flyer or anything made up for that?
Uh, you mean the Merkley Town Hall?
Uh huh.
Yeah. Good question. I can find out and I can route that over to you. Do you want me to send it to your chamber events email or just to you?
Send it to me so I can get it to the appropriate.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. That is something that missed our radar, but I saw I have only one email. That's one sentence. And it was right during Cherry Festival. So that's all I have for an alert from them at all. So
right.
I missed that. So let's grab any information that we can so we can get that out there for everybody. That would be awesome. I'm Bill Lennox.
Good morning, everyone. I'm with Six Rivers Dispute Resolution Center and everything's going well with that. Also, I just wanted to do a shout out to the chamber for the, the parade on Saturday. I think it was an incredible event and unfortunately, like with every event, even the float that I was part of, we had prepared music to have be on the float. And of course, the, the main musician came down with COVID just before that morning. So our float was a bit empty, but anyway, it was such a wonderful parade and such a great turnout. And thank you, Lisa, for all the work that you did.
You're welcome. The Kiwanis, when you see a Kiwana, a member from the Dells, you need to say thank you. It took them a whole day to be able to figure the lineup up logistically. And then they helped light them up out there. So, and we do give money to the organization for them doing that because we want to give back, but there was 117 entries, folks. That was one big parade, but it went quickly smoothly. So everybody had fun. And I got to ride in it for the very first time in the 12 cherry festivals I've done. So it's kind of fun to see everybody from that perspective this year. Yeah, it was a lot of fun. I had lots of giggles and made people do waves and take recordings and pictures. So I probably have 100 pictures of our community watching the parade. So it's kind of cool. But I thank you, Bill. With that, Matt Cole?
Matt Cole, under Direct Line IT and incoming chair for the Dallas Chamber Board. Not a lot, just happy to be here and hear what Dan has to say this morning.
All right. Thanks, Matt. So with that, Mr. Dan Richardson, the floor is all yours. Do you need to screen share during this?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then I won't worry about that, but I will watch for hands and questions for you. How's that?
Thank you very much. Just, just because I'm inspired to, I will, I will share my own Cherry Festival memory. I don't think I've ever been in the parade and I was a little bit dreading it. It's not really my jam to be that kind of center of attention, but we did put on a float and it was a riot. We had a great time. Parade was huge. And seeing it from the street view was, was obviously very different than from seeing it from sidewalk. And Bill, I really feel for you because our float also had music. And of course, when you line up music, you're, you're at the mercy of of the musicians showing up and they showed up for me just in spirit. They showed up in, you know, in good spirits and got on there and sorted themselves out and just made it a great time. And they're all local people, very talented people. And as we rode along the parade route, little kids would start dancing. You could sort of see this wave of people like kind of light up as they heard the music. It was kind of old timey music and it was a lot of fun. It was really good to see. And at the end, I was, you know, I was very grateful that these seven folks had showed up and they ended up thanking me. They were like, thanks for letting us do this. And anyway, it was, it was quite an experience. It was really enjoyable. But however, let's, let's talk about city stuff. And I do want to say just share one thing. You all know that I've got this other project I'm running for county commissioner along with a bunch of other people, for other people. And one commitment I made to myself when I decided to do that, when my wife Judy and I decided to take that project on was to keep full value as a city counselor and to keep participating, you know, fully. And we have, I have, and it's, it's quite a juggle, but I feel good in that I have kept up and, and doing that. So this morning, city of the Dallas stuff, I'm going to do sort of a, a top 10 list. My brain goes to lists and bullet points and that's kind of how I think. And maybe that's an artifact of the internet age, but here we go. I've got 10 things for interested people to keep an eye on at the city this year. And in no particular order, I'm just going to give them to you. And if you have thoughts or questions about them, feel free to ask. This is, you know, informal, but these are, I think, all worthwhile. So top of my list is the Tony's building site. And you may have seen there's a QR code and a banner up there for people to participate in essentially it's participate and share your thoughts on, on the sort of things you would like to see at that space. That project's been very interesting. Obviously, it's a long time in coming, but it sort of illustrates how I've seen things work and we have a number of former or current county commissioners. They can, they can comment on this. Correct me if they think I'm off base, but a lot of times things with government seem to move really slow. It's slow and slow and slow, and then all at once. And that's how Tony's building went, slow and slow. And then, you know, one day it was down. So that's something to keep an eye on this year's, and that's not strictly a city project. It's an urban renewal project, but of course the city is heavily involved in, in a large partner in that. So that's, that's one. Keep an eye on and participate in the Tony's former Tony's site and join the conversation on the sort of things you'd like to see there. Number two, for this year is adjacent to the Tony's site is the Federal Street or is Federal Street and about a dozen parking spaces there. It's the proposed site of Plaza or a town center. It's something I support. I think that would be great for our town. I think it'd be very useful to people to have a sort of a physical heart of the town. Place to meet, a place to essentially have that traditional, what we call third space, which is not work and it's not home. It's, it's this other community space. It's available to everybody. That's in conversation, but we don't have anything scheduled. So that's something that would be worth keeping an eye on and or participating in. So Federal Street Plaza. Number three is the future direction of the this tax financed debt.
Dad?
Yeah.
You might want to relay that last sentence. I don't know if everybody else had that same experience, but you froze.
I froze.
It was a great pose though. It wasn't a bad pose for you to be frozen in. So that's the other concern.
Screen capture that. We'll, we'll find a use for it. Number three is of the 10 things to watch at the city and, and city related projects is the future of the Urban Renewal Agency or Urban Renewal Agency and District. It comes to a close or it's scheduled to come to a close in two or three years. That's a decision, obviously, the, the Urban Renewal Board can make, but it's scheduled, I think, if it goes all the way to the end, it'd be 2029. We have just several million dollars left. So it's, 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 it's money. It's real money, but it's not that much money. And we have a few projects on the, on the list. You know, we are figuring that out now. So that's, that's something that would be worth watching and participating. And if you have thoughts, make them known now because a year or two from now it will be too late. Things will be set in motion or being finished up. Number four, this gets into the weeds a little bit, but it's important. The city has a water master plan that it is writing or consultant and staff are writing. And that's really taking a big picture look at our water system. And I, to my mind, the city has, any city has some really critical things that they have to or it has to deliver. And the first is water. I know roads come to people's mind and those are very important. But it's, if, if you turn the tap and nothing comes out, that's, that's a problem. That's, that's sort of the first thing that we deliver to each other with, with the city and ours is good. It's strong. But we do need to reflect on that. Take a look at the 100 miles or so of pipeline and make plans for how to maintain and strengthen that. And I contend that we also need to be looking a decade or two out because climate change is real. It's on us and it's going to affect things like snowpack, which affects our water supply. So we are thinking about that. That plan hasn't been finished yet. That'll be finished this summer. It's definitely something I'm looking at with interest. So number four is water master plan. Number five, and somewhat related to water is the conversation the city council and city staff are starting to have and hopefully will come to some conclusion on number five. A process for how to allocate our Google funds. This is something that's important for the county, in my opinion, as well, since both city and county receive very similar streams of funding or will be from Google. It's not, I've said this before, and if I've said it in your hearing, forgive me, but the metaphor I use is Google funds will not be like a tsunami. It's not going to be a big wave of money that takes care of everything all at once for everybody. Instead, it's going to be a stream, a pretty steady stream for the next 20 or 25 years. And if we channel that appropriately, we can really get something done. It's enough money. It's on the order of to be determined, 25 or $30 million each for city and county. It's enough money that we can do kind of anything with it, but we can't do everything with it. And I'm, I'm pretty determined for my part, as much as I can, to put that money to some particular use or, or set of uses and not just let it sort of flow into the general fund and evaporate. I don't want us to look back in 10 or 20 years and say, what did we do with that? We need to be able to do something meaningful and worthwhile. So that's, that's a critical conversation that's coming up this year and it's a good thing. That's number five. Perhaps the biggest one. Number six. And also in the weeds, but also important is we get, as Lisa knows, we get some transient room tax, basically hotel room tax, hotel motel tax. And we are also going to be looking at that in a sort of big picture scheme. And that's, that's also a steady stream of money that comes to the city. There are some particular things we have to do with that. There are some particular things we have to do with that. Speaking in really, really round numbers. It's about a million and a quarter a year and very roughly about a third goes to Parks and Rec. About a third goes into the city's general fund and a third goes to tourism promotion. And that's chugging along. Uh, the good thing about that is it's not tax money. It's, it's money the visitors pay for staying in our fair city. But it's also opportunity this year for council and staff and partners to think about some bigger questions like what kind of tourism might we want to promote? Do we need more cruise ship support or is it doing well? Do we need to, do we want to target some particular audiences or diversify or, or those sorts of things? And those big picture questions I think are really important because they set actions for, you know, a number of years to come. That's number six. Number seven, the Waldron or Gitl Building. I guess we should probably someday decide what we're going to call that. The Ghost Signs Project is underway. So this is not a big decision. Decision's been made on that building. But it's kind of neat where the ghost signs will be projected onto the side of the building. And I believe that starts late this summer. And they are already, the artist is already down there, uh, going, starting work, setting up. Uh, it's, it's a it's a sort of projector. And that should be pretty, uh, pretty interesting and just one of those things that makes our, our town a little bit more interesting or fun. That's number seven. And I'm, I'm gratified because that conversation keeps popping up over the years. And there's been a number of variations or ideas for that. Do we, you know, put a lot of money into somehow renovating that building? Do we tear it down? Do we move it brick by brick to another spot? And all of those are very expensive and maybe not super satisfactory resolutions, just because it's, it's location and whatnot. So the ghost signs was a sort of a creative alternative, a creative way to find value and to keep the building and part of our history present without spending a very large amount of money. It's actually quite a small amount of money. Number eight. And this is something I'm kind of a little bit proud of in my time at city council. We, as city council and senior staff for about the last couple of years have just started setting goals for the city, annual goals. And I guess I always thought that would be sort of part of the process. It, it may have been once upon a time. But it has not been for a while and at least in, in recent memory. And so the budget process would go something like this. The staff would put, you know, the departments would put their budgets together. The city manager would give maybe a little direction and review it. And then they would drop this budget book on us, you know, several hundred pages. All at once, uh, in late April. It's budget season, we call it. And then the council and citizens on the budget committee would review that. And it's a little late in the process to have any significant impact. It would, it would be a very heavy lift for people at the inside city at this, at the various departments, sort of change direction or take on new projects or anything like that. So the goal setting occurs in the fall and essentially gives staff direction on what to do with a little bit of their excess time. So you know, we have good people in place that continue operations, critical operations for the water, the wastewater, the roads, uh, the libraries, the police, et cetera. And they do their jobs and they do their jobs every day, but we have a little bit of excess money and time. Not maybe not excess. We have a little discretionary money and time. And the goal setting helps direct that. And it's been something we've developed as a body over the next, uh, past couple of years. And I think it's really fruitful, but I say it to you, not, not just to say hooray for me, since that was one of my goals in, in coming to council three years ago, three and a half years ago. But also it's a way for people who are really digging into our community and thinking about things or have an interest in the function of the city to have a little bit more say in things going forward. So if you want the city to consider something above and beyond, um, you know, talk to one of your counselors and talk, talk to them and make a case and, and help them think about what might be an additional goal for the city to take on. Number nine is street trees. I think this is round two. It may be round three for some of them. The question here is live or die. Are we, are we successful this time? We hope so. This time around, we have cities committed to a contract that goes for, I think, three years of maintenance. So you may have seen the contractor, uh, whose name escapes me now, but it's a professional tree company, an arborist company. Out there digging up some wells, putting in some soil, uh, planting trees. And we should see them out there watering this summer. And yet, despite our best intents, it remains a little bit of an open question. Are we going to succeed at this? Uh, I hope so. I supported it. I think it'd be good for, uh, good for our downtown, but obviously it's a little bit remains to be seen. It's a little bit of hope as much of, uh, as anything. So that's number nine is street trees. And number 10, and this one's big. We have five people in our city council. They're just citizens. They're just people, obviously, uh, fellow, fellow residents that we elect for four-year terms. They're all at large. And three of them are coming up for election this November. So three fifths of the council will apparently be new folks. Which is both exciting, but kind of a wild card. It's a bit of a, it'll be a little bit of loss of institutional memory. And I encourage, and this is, this is, like I said, this is a big one. And I encourage folks who like yourselves, who are knowledgeable and engaged in the community and have a heart for our, our neighbors and our community to be thinking on this a little bit. If you're interested in serving, if you know a thoughtful person who could do a good job and we could talk about what that might entail, uh, let me know or send them my way or just talk with them and encourage them to consider it. Uh, I really want to do it. I can. And, and again, I'm trying to encourage and recruit each of you, deputize each of you to see what we can do to make sure we have some thoughtful, honest, uh, hardworking people apply for those positions this fall. So there's three seats. Let's, let's see if we can get three really dedicated neighbors running for that. And I'm going to take a breath. That's, that's a top 10 list.
Dan?
Yes.
Why don't you just review for ease of us looking up which three are going off of city council?
You bet. And I don't think I'm speaking out of school. I think all of them have said repeatedly publicly that that's the case. And of course they can change their minds. No, no one's locked in, but the three that appear to be going off are, uh, Darcy, uh, Rod, uh, and myself. And you know, ma- maybe some of, some of that dynamic will change. Maybe somebody will change their mind, but regardless, even if somebody does, there will be three seats up for election. Nobody's, nobody's owed or guaranteed a seat.
Okay.
It's, it's our, our, our three seats are coming up, uh, as community members and our city, our city manager, Matthew Kleeb likes to say, and I know I've said this in public too, so I'm not sharing anything untoward. He says, uh, he thinks we're a small town, a large town becoming a small city. And we have some of the challenges that a, a small city might have. But what that means for us is, um, or at least in my opinion, what it means is we need city council folks to take this as a, a public service, but it's a public service job. You know, it's, it's not a full-time job, but, but take the service seriously. Show up ready to work, um, with a work ethic and show up with consistency uh, and a heart for service, a heart and a willingness to listen to lots of people. And yeah, let's get three good ones, whoever they are.
Great. Thank you for answering that.
You bet.
I know we can go digging and we can go for, this is just easier. So any questions while he takes a gulp of coffee or water and takes a deep breath? I think we all need more coffee.
Dan, I apologize. My, I had a system glitch and I missed the first part. Could you just, uh, send me a, it looks like you're reading off a paper. Could you just send me a screenshot of your paper?
Yeah, you bet. I'll, I'll, I'll type it up here while we're thinking. And if nobody has questions, I'm, I'm warning you. I've got part two here.
So don't, don't worry about typing. Just send me a photo.
Yeah, I can do that. You bet.
I'm not seeing any question. Oh, there we go. Scott.
And Dan, just a question. I, I get lost in the whole discussion regarding the use of the old Thomas Motors site. They're on second across from True Value. The
Yeah.
And, and what's happening with that? I'm, I'm sure I've been told several times, but I, I, you never know exactly where the process, I mean, we're in the development of that. We are now because there's, we've had several development proposals in downtown and never, they never came to any fruition, but just kind of curious, what is the progress on that site?
Oh, you bet. Uh, I, I will, I will do, I'll do you one better. I'll tell you that. And then a couple of little bonus details. Uh, so everything I say is, uh, from public meetings, from public record, uh, things we've talked about in public. So just, just FYI, I'm not sort of sharing any, um, you know, confidential stuff or inside baseball. So that, uh, across from Sawyer's on Third Street. Yes. Are we, are we talking about the same side? Are we, are we talking about a different site? Yeah. It's sort of, uh, yeah. So on Third Street across from Sawyer's, uh, the old, uh, Motors building. Are we talking? So I hope we're talking about, there's two, there's two old car lots, right? And both are going on, both have things going on. One is the uh, Basalt Commons project, the apartment project. Is that the one you're thinking of, Scott? Yeah. Mary Handlin, uh, in town here has, uh, a large development proposed there. It's, uh, it's an apartment building. I believe it's on the order of 110 apartments and four or five stories. She's, uh, uh, proposed that developed, uh, or prepared plans. It's in public record because she asked for and received some urban renewal, uh, incentive financing. It's both a, a large amount, but a small percentage of the project. It was about a million and a quarter dollars. Urban renewal incentivizes housing downtown. Uh, uh, second, you know, uh, upper story housing is what I'm trying to spit out. And this would be all upper story housing. The timeframe on that's a little uncertain and is contingent on, um, interest rates. And as you probably all know, interest rates for housing or for construction of any kind spiked this last year. And I think they need to come back down to a reasonable amount. And I believe that's somewhere in the 6% uh, neighborhood is, is, is the reasonable amount. And then that project should get underway. So it will be, it'll be a large one. It will be a lot of housing, uh, which is needed, you know, we, we do need more units in town. And when it comes to fruition, it will be really good news for downtown. You know, communities that have a prosperous downtown or prosperous area, urban area, uh, are prosperous in part because they have people there. They have people living there. And so this will be very good for businesses downtown and, and, um, I'm looking forward to seeing that groundbreaking of one of these, one of these months or years. So it's called the, uh, Basalt Commons Project.
Yeah. At the Cherry Festival, I talked to a gentleman who who lives downtown with his wife. I didn't ask him where. And he says, he's, it's fantastic. Everything's in, he, he can get you everything. He likes to walk, so walking to Safeway isn't a problem for him. So he, he really enjoys living down, living downtown. He's relatively new to the community too, but he likes that.
I had opportunity a couple of times in the last 10 or 12, 15 years maybe to spend a few weeks or a, a month in a city, a couple of different times. Residing, you know, uh, in a downtown situation, uh, which was very different than having my big backyard. A little bit of space, but the benefits were undeniable. Uh, you know, it was a very different mode of living in that way. But it was lovely to be able to walk out a, a front door and then be in the middle of a, of a lively space and walk, uh, you know, a block to a coffee shop or two blocks to this or three blocks to that. Yeah, there's a lot to recommend.
I think the fact that not having a backyard is another recommendation.
The older I get, the more I appreciate that. Commissioner Brady, I see a hand up.
So you may have answered this, but I, I think Scott originally asked about the Atkinson Parking Lot, which is across the street from where Basalt Commons is. You could follow up on that?
Uh, well, it's a parking lot. It's going to be a parking lot. It's going to be a bigger parking lot. What to say about that? Uh, it's an expensive piece of property, but property downtown is expensive. And, uh, on one hand, if you say that's a million dollar parking lot, it sounds, it may raise an eyebrow. It raised my eyebrow, but ultimately I supported it for a couple of reasons. Uh, one is the sort of control our destiny argument. It allows the city and really it's, it's half city and half urban renewal. So it's, it's a, it's a hybrid, um, purchase. It does allow us to control, uh, an empty vacant lot downtown just as things are starting to develop within a block or two. And guide or, uh, appropriately prepare that ground for development. Or for parking as need, uh, demands. And, um, if Basalt Commons, when Basalt Commons goes up and there's people there, parking might get somewhat more squeezed than we're used to. I will say, I've heard a lot of people worry about parking. And I remember a conversation just a year or so ago with a gentleman downtown right out in front there, right out in front of, uh, of one of the businesses there. And he said, well, what about parking? And I literally walked out in the street and looked both ways in the middle of the day on Third Street. There's nothing but empty spaces here. I think, you know, and I, I do want to be cognizant of, uh, of the freedom to park within a reasonable distance of, of businesses downtown. We do not have a parking shortage. Uh, God willing, someday we have that conversation. It will mean things are, are prosperous and busy downtown. So the parking lot's in part to guide the destiny. And another reason is we have some, we had some, um, uh, recovery, American recovery funds that had a deadline to be spent. And, uh, we use that. So it was, uh, the funds granted us then in all small cities. And it had to be spent. We spent it and we can, you know, it went like, it went from being liquid money to real estate. I grant you, yet, uh, we're going to be able to get our funds out of that. We'll be able to put that, uh, get our money back if we ever wanted it out of that parking lot. It's a prime spot and we're going to have it looking good and, and being of utility. So I, I think it's, I think it's a, an okay decision.
And it's supported to, um, bear in mind, the county is moving into our new office space. That, I'd like to start calling it the Wasco County Building, but I think the planners said they'd like something that won't confuse people with the courthouse, which is a block away. There's also parking on First and Federal.
Yeah.
Block away from our new office building. Walking a block to work is, is, is totally acceptable. You won't get enough steps in if, if you're parked right in front of your, your office.
It, it's, it's a little bit like the roundabout. There were some people that, uh, maybe hadn't used a roundabout or just didn't like it. It kind of scratched their head on the, on the concept. And, um, you know, some people, if, if they're not really familiar with something, get a little concerned about it. uh, which is understandable. But as soon as that thing was built, it was, you know, it was the right, it was obvious that it was the right, uh, right way to go. It made traffic flow there, uh, much better. And, um, as soon as people, uh, if we ever do get, uh, a little bit busier downtown, uh, and we get over the idea that we should be able to park right in front of anything we want, any time of the day, uh, and might have to walk up to a block, um, we'll realize that's okay too. It's just not that big a lift.
I agree. We need to work on that messaging. If you go anywhere that's a bigger town with lots of things, you're going to have to walk at least three to four blocks. So.
We don't, we don't want to have to walk four blocks from them. Let's not get extreme here, Lisa, but you know.
At least not parking in front of your own business or somebody else's business.
We're not gonna, we're, you know, we're not gonna pinch parking really hard, but that's, that's the, uh, the cost of, of prosperity, right? Is, is, is a little bit of business, a little bit of, uh, bustle and, and hustle and bustle. And it'll, it'll be good if, when we get a little bit more of that. Obviously the city of the Dallas is a big place. It's much bigger than downtown. Uh, it just happens to be that several of our projects in the works, um, public projects, but also, uh, private development projects are, um, are sort of happening downtown. The county building, and you guys are actually moving in as we speak, yes?
Yeah, slowly. Uh, we'll have our first, uh, commissioner meeting on May 1st. Uh, the entrance is on um, Federal Street.
So what if, 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 uh, the commissioners were to lay out a top 10 list, maybe, uh, top of the list there would be what to rename that building, what to call that building? Yeah. Uh, I'm being a little silly, but no, it's, uh, it's, it's worth, it's worth doing. And right across the street from there, of course, is the, uh, the farm stand or, or downtown, um, grocery project, which is coming to, uh, quickly coming closer to opening up. So within, really within just a couple of blocks in a couple of years, there will be, uh, the grocery uh, and affiliated, um, operations opening up at the old Chronicle building or the old hardware store. If you think about back a couple of iterations, uh, it's going to be, uh, very nice looking. I got a chance to peek inside. And, um, I'm very excited about that. And then the county will be moving staffers, moving staff adjacent, uh, there to what old timers might call the old J C Penney's building. Uh, I remember when it was pennies and we'd park underneath and, and whatnot. And then next to that will be the, uh, Basalt Commons. So it seems, uh, you know, if you look at it on the timeframe of a day or a month, uh, it'll be like slow and slow and the slow. And then if you look back a couple of years from now, it'll seem like it happened all at once.
Just, just to correct, uh, then Bill has one comment. It was the old Payless Drugs building. The old J C Penney's building is now discounts plus.
Oh, darn you, Phil. You're right.
Yeah.
Thank you for that.
And actually the, the, the new grocery store was my dad's old grocery store.
Prior to the, prior to the hardware store?
Yeah.
Okay.
Phil's had his hand up.
Former Commissioner, uh, Commissioner Emeritus Linux.
I have a very important request for downtown, and that's that if you're going to make places for people to park, that you include bike racks. Because people are using their electric bikes more and more these days to get around. And there really isn't any place to really attach them to poles and what have you. So if there could be a few really kind of innovative bike racks, that would be really helpful.
That's a great idea. It hadn't occurred and, um, thank you for sharing that. Absolutely. I suspect a bike rack for an electric bike might have to be designed maybe a little different than the, uh, traditional, you know, thin tire bikes. Most of those are pretty hefty, but I don't. Regardless, yeah, thank you. Hmm. Do they need parking spaces or do they need racks?
No, well, oh, I'm sorry. I, but you know, technology, yes, they've been fat tired and there's some fat tired electric bikes, but as you know, technology is moving that you almost sometimes can't even tell the difference because they've gotten so skinny. And so you, I'm not sure you have to really make any great changes, you know, you just have to provide space for them.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Yeah. Mine is the same size as a regular bike. So, yeah.
Excellent. Uh, uh, just because we have a minute, quick show of hands or voices. Who's ridden an electric bike? Anyone, anyone? No? I did, I did just once. I'm not sort of, uh, I'm not going to propose that I'm an expert at it, but, uh, actually one time when I was living for a few weeks in a city or, or staying a few weeks in a city, they had electric bikes everywhere. I thought, darn it, uh, I'm tired of seeing these things zip around and, and not knowing how that works. So I got out early one morning and you know, rented one. Actually, I did this a couple of times and, uh, renting an electric bike and flying through town at, uh, you know, prior to rush hour at six 30 or seven in the morning. Highly recommended. It's a lot of fun. Yeah. Good way to, uh, different way to see a town.
I, I have to make one other comment. I know Phil's reaction. You see, there's a little bit of a problem with people that ride regular bikes. Sometimes they look, they, they, they put up their, put down their noses or whatever you want to put into people on electric bikes. But until you've ridden one and really appreciate the fact that you can go visit the, the lovely cherry orchards without having in a nice way rather than wearing yourself out, you know, that's what makes them so special.
I'm all for electric bikes and when they replace cars. I think that's great. Otherwise, I went, when I got on an electric bike, I started to realize, oh, this is what people talk about when they talk about Catholic guilt. I felt guilty like, this is crazy.
Oh my goodness. Uh, well, since we're on it and we're just about wrapped up, I will say, uh, I'm very cognizant of my own opinion or views on this and my neighbors. I've heard something, something to the effect of, we don't want the Dallas to be Hood River. And we want, don't want the Dallas to be Portland, uh, a number of times and a hundred percent agree. We don't, we don't want to, um, suffer the indignities of Portland or become, uh, so tourist saturated downtown that we lose our own place, um, like Hood River feels sometimes. That said, downtown Portland has these bikes you can rent and electric bikes and, um, you get one of those and you zip up and down and back and forth across the bridges, uh, some morning. It's, it's, it's a, it's a worthwhile experience, highly recommended. And, uh, you could do that with a regular bike, but the, the rentals make it, uh, very convenient. You just sort of pick it up, unlock it and, and zoom away and then you're done and you, and you walk away. It's, uh,
And I, I think the thing to do about the, the sentiment of not wanting the Dallas to become someplace else is can get focused on, on housing for our, I call it blue class. How is it? When, uh, when a city becomes too gentrified, then that's the issue. And we, we, we speak of it in terms of culture, things like signage and do we have McDonald's? Do we have a Starbucks on every corner? But the, you know, the real issue is, is housing for support, um, support staff workers.
Sure. I appreciate that. I, I think of, um, yes, I, I.
To make this even more pointy, like, okay, what type of housing would Basalt Commons be?
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's a private, you know, it's being supported by, by urban renewal, I believe. But it's, you know, is that going to be upscale or is that going to be affordable?
Well, whether it's affordable, uh, I guess depends on, on, on how we define that. But no, it's going to be market rate. It'll be market rate housing. Which we need. Uh, some people will say we need housing at, at every scale and every level. And, and I guess my argument is well, you know, uh, people that can pay at the top of the scale, they're going to be all right. You know, they're, they're going to find a space or build a space. It's the people that, uh, if my daughter, who's 20, ever moves back to town and wants to, you know, build a life here, how in the heck is she going to, uh, afford a house? Right? If my, uh, uh, if, if folks who are, uh, elders want to downsize, it, the, the math becomes challenging sometimes. It's not a simple, uh, simple swap from one to, you know, from a big house to a small house. We just don't have that much availability. And, uh, you know, I think of some of the, uh, I don't know that many, uh, 25 year olds, but, but I run across a few and heard a couple of them speaking the other day and, and they were saying, you know, how do we do this? How do we make this work? And back in the day, not very long ago, um, you know, a working couple or family, you know, had bills and it might be tight. It might be challenging as, as it often was starting out as a young person. But there was not a question, if you could find housing, you might not find the one you want right off, but you could find a place, maybe you rent and you work your way up. But nowadays, um, the supply just isn't there. And the question for a lot of people is not, can we find the one we really want? It's can we find something? Yeah. So we need to, we need to, we need more units to be built of all kinds, but mostly, I, I think mostly, yes, Phil, uh, workforce house. That is housing for young working families or just working families, uh, uh, young folks starting out. And then on the other end of the spectrum, uh, elders looking to maybe, uh, downsize or, or, um, well, yeah, downsize.
Before we close, can I share a cute picture? Coming back to the theme of it was a great parade?
Sure. You should be able to share without any.
Yeah. It's super fun to have, uh, oh, two-year-old grandson, uh, at the parade. He was going, oh, cop car, ooh, tractor, ooh, big truck. It was super fun.
Good.
But thank you.
Yeah. What a great photo. I'll tell you, it was fun riding in the parade and seeing everybody dancing because I had music in front of our bass boats and music behind. So everybody was moving and oh my God, we have some very talented little tiny, tiny, tiny girls who have a.
Yeah.
So it was fun to watch that. So Dan, thank you so much. I appreciate all the info, just the candidness, um, and having this conversation, uh, everyone. I put in the chat early on, we're hosting tonight, uh, the Latino Support Businesses Workshop number two. Um, and so that is happening tonight. And then obviously the candidate forum next Tuesday, I put that in there. I also put the link to put questions. Um, it's out there. It's on our social medias. So it was in our e-blast yesterday. Uh, we have a lot going on right now. And if I were to send out separate e-blasts for everything, our people would stop opening them. So we're trying to get the important information at the top and, uh, letting people know what's going on. So it has been a very busy last few weeks, uh, but I feel like we still are moving forward and, uh, the questions, uh, please, 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 please share that. Uh, so that we can get people who have questions for different, and you could just pick the position that you have the questions for. And then Roger Nichols will be moderating that and asking those questions that night of our candidates. Yes.
Lisa, will that be a, a new, a different group of people attending the Latin, Latinx business group?
Uh, we're hoping for more, but it'll probably be some of the same. The same people, but we're hoping for a few more to come. We've been doing some outreach this last couple of weeks. We also are having, Erica Flores with the Rivermark Community Credit Union is our guest speaker, along with Hector Medina, uh, from, uh, Amquita, Amqua. And they're both be there talking about finance and statements.
And what time does, what time does that start again?
It starts at 5:30.
Okay.
And we'll have pizza. You can come and have pizza with us, Phil.
Okay.
We would love to have you there. And actually the very first part will be pizza instead of the end. So you could network a little bit if you wanted to do some meet and greet with them. Yep. And it'll still be in the same room. We're still at the college. So. All right. With that, everybody, thank you so, so much. Appreciate you being here, taking time to be engaged in your community. And have a great weekend. And I'm enjoying, I can hear the rain in here, which means we're getting some moisture, uh, so needed. So thank you. You guys go and enjoy, maybe go do a little dance in the rain.
Thank you, everybody.
Bye.